Nobody's taking my seat.
Hello.
Hello.
Hey Falcon.
Alright, bring the city council meeting dated two, three, nineteen eighty-six to order. Uh, first things first, we'd like to welcome everyone and announce the winners of the election to be, uh, seated.
Godzilla win?
There again?
Did Godzilla win?
No, no Godzilla did not win. Did Godzilla did not win? Honorable mention to Godzilla.
Can we, can we actually get a count of the votes, uh, for everybody?
Uh, I'll give you what, yeah, I'll give you what I was given here. So, the winners of the election, well, there's only four elected or in the running, so all four get seated. But I've given to you in the order in which the, the votes fell. How about that?
Sure.
Alright, so with the most votes, Gilbert Brown, Gilbert Brown in the,
No, Dr. Brown, I don't see Dr. Brown around.
Not. I could get a, I could fax him.
Who? Tim O T, I got it. Yeah, speak up.
I apologize, I apologize. Gilbert Brown with forty votes, Dr. Pat with thirty-two votes, Timothy Bradford with twenty-six votes, and Robert De Knob with twenty-four votes. The following four people come up and take their seats at the council. If you could fax Gilbert and tell him that he won. Um, Austin Johnson got six, Robin Elwood got one, Kyle Kent got one, Godzilla got one, Daniel Woodcock got one, and Seymour Butts got one.
Seymour Butt, wow, he's that, oh, that, like, next time I'm, I'm gonna pull hard for Seymour.
Alright, so I believe we have enough people. Well, congratulations on your reelections and Tim, welcome to the council.
Thank you. Well, he's gotta, he's gotta give his welcome speech though, because this is, yeah, yeah, sorry, Tim, can you go up, uh, to the front here and, uh, give your, your welcome speech to constituents?
Tell us what you're gonna do, tell the council what you're gonna do, tell the people what you're gonna do for them.
At the podium? Yeah, podium, yeah. Oh, okay. Oh, Jesus, he's not, he's not rocking up for the pressure.
Lot of stress.
Yeah, yeah, tripping over the cords there.
Gilbert is doing great, Tim.
Uh, first off, uh, I would like to say thank you.
Sorry, who are you again?
Oh, I'm Timothy Bradford. Uh, first off, I would like to say thank you to everyone that came out and voted in general. And, uh, everyone that, uh, voted for me. Um, thank you for instilling me with your trust and your vote. I will do my best to represent, uh, the people and, uh, and the city. Um, I will be trying to hold a weekly forum, uh, besides the council itself, to speak with the public about any issues they may have or, uh, anything they may want, wanna speak with a council member on. Uh, one of the first things I am working on, uh, it's to establish a chamber of commerce. I don't have any questions about it now, because I'm wanting to get all the ducks in a row before I present it to city council, but it is something I am actively, actively working on. And I hope to build better relations between government officials and the city as a whole.
So, so these meetings that you're planning on doing, uh, they're just an andorator of city council, right? Because you're gonna be basically just trying to get your, your stuff pushed through with the citizenry, right? Like, that's what this, one of those meetings are?
Uh, the, the point of those meetings are to be able to talk to the citizens, see what their concerns are, and what they're looking to have brought to the council and that I can represent for them.
Why, why wouldn't they just come here to the city council and bring it to us directly?
Because it, just because one hour a week does not give enough people to ask questions and do what they need to do. So maybe making ourselves more presentable and more o- open and out there to be able to spoke, speak to at a certain time would help them be able to come up to us and have a conversation with us. I'm gonna do what I can to create as much time for the citizens of Los Santos as I can.
You're not implying that we're not presentable though.
No, I'm not implying that you're not, no. But I would like to put myself out there more and show them, hey, if you wanna come speak to me, here's a good time that you can come speak to me. That is not just city council, it's not just in a proper meeting setting where we can sit down and actually speak about, hey, well, how are you feeling? What's going on? How's your business doing? Uh, do you see any concerns, things like that?
Alright, alright, well, I love the ambition, I love the ambition.
May I, uh, be seated?
Uh, a couple questions, so.
Okay.
You, you know the powers of the council?
Um, I understand that we have, uh, legislative powers, um, we now, there's things that we cannot get done um, that are more of a federal, federal level, and, uh, I know that if anything, if I have questions, I have a group of peers and, uh, yourself and the ju- judiciary to speak to as well, if needed.
Well, I look forward to it. Bring some of your legislation to see what you do for the city. Alright.
No, he can sit down, yeah.
I guess.
God, that's, that's so disrespectful, he's not here. It is so disrespectful, really, I can't believe him.
Well, in the meantime, um, we can continue on this, uh, next, uh, a way to do with a pledge of allegiance and all that stuff, if you guys don't wanna do that, uh, in a bit, but we'll get someone else up there to speak. Uh, I've got reelected, uh, let's go Cat, Cat, why don't you go up here and tell people how great you, how grateful you are to, uh, serve yet another term.
Yeah, don't forget the gratitude part of that, that's, uh, super important.
Mm-hmm, I am grateful. Um, hello everyone, I'm Dr. Cat, and again, I am very grateful for the reelection. Thank you for your confidence in me. Um, I'm just still working a little bit on what we discussed last week, um, more to come on that.
Well, wait, what were we discussing last week? Can you catch me up?
Um, so, I'm.
The short version, the TLDR, come on.
I, when Stickard was on council, I'd worked with him a while ago regarding hospital and the repeat, um, threats to hospital workers. Um, I'm focusing on repeat offenders. I'm working with AJ and Vinny on it, so that's where I'm at.
Okay, that's, uh, that's, uh, that's good.
Uh, any questions from the public or Cat? Or Timothy for that matter?
Uh, yeah, no questions this time. It seems pretty straightforward what she's working on. I actually had a conversation with her about it, uh, the other day.
Alright, well, don't be a slob and vote for De Knob.
Good out there Bobby.
Got this.
Well, I mean, he does, he got elected and he does have him.
Hello, council, Robert De Knob, and I also would like to thank the, uh, people who supported me and everyone who voted in general. Uh, it shows great, uh, that you care about the city, that you vote, whether you voted for me or not, that's what's most important. And, uh, now that I am a, an official elected member of the, uh, council, uh, next week I will presenting, uh, my legislation for the, uh, welcome wagon of Los Santos. I am currently working with Savannah, uh, and, uh, already been in talks with the deputy mayor about making up a pamphlet and, uh, also establishing a, uh, an organization, uh, not only, uh, two organizations, uh, one is, uh, business related and the other is, uh, trying to connect people uh, that are new to the city with people who that exist in the city to kind of, uh, show them around and, uh, and, uh, socialize. It's a, uh, organization I like to call Grindr where people can meet and do some jobs. And, uh, like I said, a lot more will be coming on that next week.
Coming all over it.
Lot more coming on Grindr.
I like that idea.
Alright.
Yeah, that's a very good idea.
No, no, why, why do we have a ghost standing over there though?
Oh, well, look at this, well. Mr. Brown, doctor, would you have a seat?
Thank you.
Well, no, well, once he sits down, he has to stand back up to the podium. Sit down, get, easy, easy.
Alright, so now that you are. Oh, I didn't know that, I wouldn't be playing you.
That's not a joke.
What, what's not a joke?
Oh, he's gotta stand back up, he's gonna present.
Well, you know what, if you've got a broken leg, I'm willing to make an exception.
No, no, no exceptions, no, 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 he's gotta get up to there. Look, he's already back up.
Ah, he's already back up. So why don't you go under the podium and, uh, state for us, uh, and the people that elected you, what you're gonna do for the council and the people of the city?
Hello, everyone, uh, Gilbert Brown, newly elected. Thank you for everyone who voted for me. Uh, I don't really have much to say right now, just besides, uh, general thank you to everyone in the council for all your hard work up to date and for everyone who has participated in the elections. I will be, um, going forward, I will be hosting two to three office hours every week where I'm going to be, uh, you know, at, in one of my offices or at place of business, which I'll make up uh, known at the, uh, on the bulletin boards. So anyone who wants to talk and discuss anything, any issues, anything they want to bring forward, any, you know, new laws, anything like that, uh, you can come and discuss with me and we can work on that. Uh, yeah, otherwise, if anyone has any questions for me about anything, just feel free to ask.
I love your ambition. Any questions from the council?
Uh, what sort of penalties would be levying to yourself if you don't make those office hours?
I will, if I do not make the office hours, I will donate a thousand dollars, uh, I don't know, to some charity.
Excellent, ten thousand dollars, some charity, love it, alright, thanks, sir.
Any, any other questions?
Do the people have any questions for the new council? Any more questions in the council? No? Alright, you can go ahead and see it. And congratulations and welcome to the council.
Thank you.
Congratulations, go up here.
And then there was, uh, only one left, besides me, of course.
You don't count.
Nope.
I, I didn't get, I didn't get elected, huh?
No, but you can go up there and tell the people what you're working on.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, Ashley Williams, uh, fish man, I, I do fish, I do a lot of fishing. Yeah, I'm not working on anything right now, um, uh, I'm just trying to keep this, uh, session kind of brief, uh, since, you know, we've lost our, uh,
Are you talking to, who are you talking to?
Oh, I'm not talking to you, sir, I was, uh, talking to the people. I'm not talking to you, I'd, I'd be talking to them, like, you know, my fellow council members, but like, you know, you're, you're, you're not, you're not a fellow council member, you're, you're the mayor, sir, like, you know.
That's right.
Um, yeah, uh, so nothing, I'm just gonna keep this brief, I'm not working on anything, uh, particular, um, I'm looking to see, looking forward to seeing how the BBB is gonna be rolling out their business, um, uh, information, and I think if we've got Mr. D'Angelo in the office, uh, might ask him to come up and give us a kind of a, I don't know, a, uh, a roadmap of how that's gonna be moving forward. Um, I know Mr. De Knob is a part of that office as well, but, um, I'd probably like to hear it from the, uh, horse's ass mouth. Uh, but other than that, yeah.
You're gonna be working in, uh, in conjunction with them for?
No, I'll be working as a, as a business owner with them, um, uh, just to see how this, uh, works going, because we've had the, uh, what was it, the February second deadline? And I noticed some posters going up for follow-up for registration, and I was actually curious to see what their, uh, process is looking like moving forward.
And Ashley, just for clarification, uh, Dr. Brown is with the BBB, I am no longer with the BBB.
Oh, okay, well, now the solution's over, over to Brown.
De Knob said it again? Dr. Brown is with the BBB, I am no longer with the BBB.
Hey, but yeah, I'm, I'm just gonna be keeping an eye on that and seeing how that is moving forward, uh, but other than that, yeah, that, that's all I got. I have no office hours, you cannot reach me, I'll be out fishing if you need me for anything, and if you do approach me while fishing, I will scat you away.
Did you say scat you away?
Yeah, I'm gonna throw poop.
Uh, any questions for the council then?
No, no, I'm not taking questions at this time.
Uh, just for the councilmen, the people.
I have a question, why aren't you taking any questions?
Uh, go back up to the podium, answer his question.
Hmm, uh, no comment.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question. Uh, yes, Tim O T. Where is it that you cannot be reached, uh, while fishing, so to make sure the public does not come disturb you when you fish at that certain location?
None of your damn business.
Alright.
Alright, Mayor Chase Reeves, um, still working on the grant information, I need to get in contact with the BBB about when the best time to get that is authorized and in conjunction with them, get the contest going, but I'm still working on the the documentation, I finished the contract, I just gotta do the, the request, so we have all the documentation for the city. Um, and then hopefully I'll be working with the new council and the new council members and seeing about, um, getting some legislation, uh, passed through here that they are invested in. But, uh, I'm just trying to get businesses up north, that's my biggest goal right now, is get businesses up north, get people back, um, coming through customs and in the city. So then, you know, and the businesses will help hopefully keep people here and, and grow the city, so that's my main goal right now, is growing the city up north, or growing the population up north. Uh, if you have any questions or concerns, definitely open for it.
Sir, you, you gave congratulations to all the new council members, correct?
Yeah, I congratulated all of them, I believe.
Uh, yeah, I thought, is there really much to congratulate though, sir? Or there was kind of a default choice?
Well, I mean, it's still one, right? I mean.
I mean, they, they just had a name on a ballot, sir, like, I mean, is there really a lot to congratulate there?
Godzilla didn't win?
Well, I mean, it would've been, I mean, yeah.
Well, I guess you do, you gotta beat up Woodcock, that's true.
He did, um, I, I think that anyone's willing to get in that race, there was more than four, I mean, there were, you know, people writing ballots with, I think anybody willing to, to do that and then to come here and accept the seat is, should be congratulated.
So with minimal work, they, they get up, taken this seat, I mean, I don't know, sir, we'll, we'll have to see, we'll have to see, sir, I'm sorry, I know you guys can hear about it.
Well, I mean, we can't.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I agree, I want this whole thing to grind to a halt, so, yeah.
Well, we can't, we can't make people, just like we can't force you to vote, we cannot force you to run. So maybe we need to make it more enticing to have more than four.
Actually, that's a good point, we should probably reach out to the public and ask, uh, hey, what would make this job more enticing for you to take?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think about that all the time as mayor.
Oh, you, you think about it, sir, you know, you should probably follow that up then, like, you should probably come up with, like, you know, some sort of a plan or, or reach out to the civilians and, uh, feel like, hey, what, what would make you run for city council? What, what sort of power do you want?
Well, I was, that's definitely like, what you, I mean, you guys should also be thinking about that, I was thinking more in the lines of on the mayor's side.
Well, you are the head of the city council, sir, so I'm just.
Well, yeah, that's true.
You are the.
Well, well, here's a question, how, what do you think would make it more enticing then?
I, I think we should probably ask Billy, I think Billy probably has a good idea what would make it more enticing to, to, to have people come into city council, being he was a city council member.
Uh, that is, are you, are you asking him as a councilman? I mean, you can ask him yourself. Are you recommending that we talk to him?
I'm just saying, like, he probably has some ideas, he probably has some ideas.
Well, I'm asking you first, then maybe you can ask him.
See, I'm not an idea man, sir, I just, I want everything to stop.
Okay, alright. Uh, that's something the council needs to look inward for or to and figure that out.
Look inside for the answers, okay.
Yep, deep inside. So, any questions for me from the council? No? Any questions for the people, from the people? No? Alright.
Alright, so, um, as you guys know, there is an open seat in the council, what we usually do is we wait till the end to do that. So what I would like to do is just open the floor up, we might, uh, open the floor up for all the questions and then we'll get in the people that, um, want to sit in that seat. So I'd like to open the floor up to anybody in, uh, in the audience, so any issues, any concerns, questions? Maybe the BBB has something to say, I don't know.
Yeah, I know, I, I know I don't have subpoena power, but I'd like to have a representative from the BBB talk a little bit about what's going on this week.
Okay, didn't really fucking plan on it, but sure.
It's not respectful, it's just, it's requesting.
Hello, city councilmen and women and the people of San Andreas. I'm Thomas D'Angelo.
Hey!
I work at the BBB, what would you like to know?
Uh, so the poster that recently went up of, uh, asking for five hundred dollars for registration fees, um,
Yes.
So, what, what, what's that process? What, what, what are we looking, uh, doing there for your, those business owners?
You, you come in, you pay five hundred dollars, you get your business license, it's a one-time fee unless you lose your license and which you can pay an additional five hundred dollars to get the license replaced.
So at this, at this time, we're still, uh, on the, uh, current system?
No, I mean, it's, as far as getting a, uh, getting a license, that's a one-time fee, there is now going to be business tax for all businesses across the state, it's, uh, the same rate for every single business in the state that is registered.
You wanna say more about that?
Sure, it's five hundred dollars every two weeks paid on the fifteenth and the thirtieth of each month.
So regardless of profit, it's five hundred dollars of, so it's, it's not really.
Yes, it's not based, not based on profits, it's, it's a flat, flat rate across every single business. It was gonna be profit-based, but, uh, in regards to, to documentation on the business side of things, like on the individual's business side of things, it's, that would be too much of a pain in the fucking ass, so we're just doing, excuse my language, but I'm not a councilman, so I can curse, uh, uh, well, I'm still going to, uh, but it's too much of a pain in the fucking ass, so, uh, okay, I will leave then if I have to, but yeah, it's too much of a pain in the fucking ass, so, uh, it's gonna be five hundred dollars every two weeks on the fifteenth and thirtieth.
So for those business, and that gets to operate a business, just to have a business license, it's gonna be five hundred, a grand a month is what you're saying?
Yes.
And can people prepay this, like, uh, or is it just like every two weeks they gotta be, you gotta show up with that five hundred dollars?
They prob, they, we, we could prepay, we haven't discussed that as, as, you know, some sort of in the constitution-based thing, but I, I don't see why people couldn't prepay their taxes, that's not really an issue, it's more of a, a factor of, of the BBB wants businesses active and not the ninety-five percent of dormant businesses with ghost owners, basically, and, and what I s- when I say ghost owner, it's a person that maybe comes in, wakes up, uh, to stock their business once and then falls back asleep for the next month. We, we want to get rid of that bullshit, so, uh, hopefully, you know, having to actually, you know, operate and, and actively, you know, do things with your business, uh, to then pay for your taxes gets people to want to actually use their business and not just, uh, just leave it dormant and not hire employees, not do anything with it.
So, now, now, I, now, I don't want you, I mean, I'm not asking these questions to hear you cuss more, but do you think there'll be diminishing returns on the involvement of the public when the taxes are too, are levy too high for them to pay? And then what?
Uh, in my opinion, five hundred dollars every two weeks, if you can't, if you can't somehow scrape together five hundred dollars in two weeks, uh, then you shouldn't own a business. It doesn't have to be profit from your, your fucking business, just find five hundred dollars.
So you, you feel that that's a, um, an equitable amount, uh, being that from places like PDM to, um, Dynasty Eight, all the way down to a, uh, I don't know, gas and gold, five hundred dollars is a, that's equitable?
Yes, yes, I do.
So even, so just for the privilege of having that business, um, even if that business isn't making that much every two weeks, you, that you feel that's equitable?
Yep, it's, uh, standard across the entire state, five hundred dollars every two weeks.
And just because it was, uh, quote, "Too much of a pain in the fucking ass," uh, to do a percentage-based off of profits?
Yes, because, uh, most businesses can't hold themselves accountable to have actual, uh, books on hand.
I know that, to give the truth, um, okay.
Also, and also the, the big five, as they're called, are not, uh, are not included in the, uh, the tax, they are government-based, uh, entities, so they are not included. They don't have to register as a business.
And they'll be run as, as they are now, previously as well?
Yeah.
So, the biggest profit turners in the state are not gonna be held accountable for?
As they're a government entity, no.
Okay.
It might be subject to something else in the future, uh, in terms of taxes or something like that, but they are government entities, uh, same thing with Weasel News, Weasel News is not a, uh, it's just a regular old business, it's a government entity, it's, uh, it's its own thing.
So, the five hundred dollars again, wha- what sort of services are you providing for that five hundred dollars? Because?
It's all, it's all stipulated in the constitution under the revised BCA, it'll be a business support fund, so it'll be for grants, if a business, uh, wants to install, you know, some sort of the, the new till system once that's in order, or if they wanna have funding that they don't currently, you know, possess for events, they can come to us and get a, uh, a stipend or a grant for said event or business or whatnot.
Well, look forward to the revised BCA then.
Alright, I think, I believe it's already in.
It's, it's not currently in, I am, I'm, I'm working on a bunch of changes all at once, but, uh, yeah.
Well, it should be in probably soon then, because Chief Justice, uh, myself, uh, other members of the BBB and the mayor there all had a sit-down, I don't know, a week ago, and, uh, discussed it and got everything changed up, so.
And with the, uh, business license, is that something that should be kept at the business, uh, available on request type of thing, or like?
Yes, I, I, I would recommend you, just maybe so you don't, you know, mistake it or, uh, misplace it, I should say, uh, I would recommend that you keep it at your place of business uh, just so that you can have it on hand, just in case, you know, one of the representatives of the BBB come in and say, hey, can we see your business license, make sure you're operating, you know, legally and whatnot, uh, just to have that on hand would be a, a good thing at the business.
Thank you, Mr. D'Angelo.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Alrighty, thank you.
Alright, any other statements or questions about the information about the BBB or any other issues? We might want to talk back to the council. No? Alright, does the council have anything they want to say before we move forward? No? Alright, so, about the open seat, so I believe in the states, anyone in the audience with an open seat can present their name, put it forward for the council to vote on. So at this time, I'd open the floor to anyone like to sit on the council, we cannot, we'll do a background check and find out if you're, if you're eligible to sit at the council. But, um, if anyone's interested, please come up and state your name and your reason for wanting to be an elected official. And if there is no one that is willing to step forward, we'll move this to next week, and I'll ask again.
And they'll keep asking people. So someone's got to stand up eventually.
Well, either that or.
I'll jump on this grenade. Alright, Barry and Macognat at your service, uh, wouldn't mind, uh, checking out the, the seat on the council, why not?
Barry, is it true that you're a local hero?
Uh, sure, I don't know, I, if I did something cool, I don't remember it.
Yeah, he's my hero.
Oh, yeah, that's true, he's a good kid, yep.
Well, uh, what have you done that, uh, that's been so heroic at least?
Oh, I pro- I provide free mountain therapy to, to all the citizens of, of Los Santos. I, uh, floor manager, uh, at Benny's, uh, around the EU times of, of the, of the degenerate hours, as many like to call it.
Alright, well, what would you, what would you do for the city if you sat on the council?
Well, I, I'd like to look into it and maybe a bit more.
Well, I, I'd like to look into hunting maybe a bit more, may, maybe, maybe find maybe more, more fishing regulations, or, or maybe a way to make it a bit more easy accessible, or, or, uh, it may be for like, like folks who just come into the city and don't know about all these, you know, you know, different, different stuff that you can do around the city. I mean, I, I, I've heard that, uh, that proposal about, uh, the, uh, the, the, what's it, the tours? You know, gi- giving new folks the tours, and, oh, yeah, yeah, the welcome wagon, I mean, I pretty much do that to all the new folks that I see, if I know someone's in, you know, new to town, I'll, I'll, I'll drive them around, I'll drive them up Palita, I'll take them on a little bit of mountain therapy, I'll do, I'll, I'll show them where, where, where to get, uh, where to get their money, you know, where, where all the hot jobs, I, I don't, I don't really do much of the hot jobs anymore, I'm sixty, so I'm technically retired. Even though I, I did, I did a lot, I owned up in Adam for a little bit, I didn't expect to be retired and a business owner at the same time. It was weird, kinda sorta fell in my lap, anywho, what was I talking about? Oh, right, the welcome wagon. Uh, so yeah, I'd, I'd, I'd take people all around, be like, oh, you can get food here, you can go do this there, that's a nice little monument, that's where people hang out, you know, tell them about the post offices and all that hullabaloo. But yeah, I, I, I pretty much just do that all on my own, just, just on, on the regular, you know, if they need some cash, you know, I, I ain't shy to focus, you know, about need, needing money, we all need a hand every once in a while, you know, if someone's down on something, I'll, I'll give them a little bit of, give them a little bit of money, if, if they wanna fancy new, new car or just something to drive around, uh, so, someone wants something, go, go hunting or whatever, I'll, I'll, I'll give them a little bit of scratch to, to, to get a car, you know?
Yeah, alright, alright. Um.
We really even need to vote for him, I mean, he should just be in here anyway, like.
Uh, council, you have any questions? Well, there's other, yeah, we gotta figure out if any of the people wanna do it too, council, you have any questions for? No? Did he, did he pass the background check at all?
Uh, yeah, I, I wanna say yes, you definitely passed background check, and, uh, Barry, what, what's it like to be blessed by God?
I'm, I'm, I'm assuming it feels nice?
Do you feel nice right now, Barry?
Oh, yeah, I, I, I feel pretty good, I mean, my shoulder hurts, I mean, I got, I, I still got shrapnel, I should probably get that checked out or something. You know, I always mean to get my shrapnel checked out, and for whatever reason, I always forget.
I mean, honestly, we should get him on the council, there are two doctors on the council, so like, we need to get that checked out, so.
Two doctors on the council, that's, that's something we said.
Oh, yeah, and, I mean, if I go, if you, if, if I end up there, you'd have two doctors and a mechanic, that's pretty much a car doctor at that point.
Hmm, yeah.
That's true, that's true, well, let us, uh, appreciate you stepping forward, let's get, see if anyone else says, and then we'll set forth the vote, I know it sounds to me like you got Ashley's vote round.
I mean, no, he's gonna, he's gonna get in, I, I wouldn't suggest anybody else actually step, I, I mean, you can if you want, but it's not gonna go well.
Jesus, anyone, anyone else like to put their name forward for the seat? So, I guess this is the same theme, actually. Is the elections, four seats, four candidates, one seat, one person coming forward.
Well, I mean, you know, the, the, we have one, we had four people come forward for this, we have now, uh, just an icon coming forward, so.
Alright, well, well, let's move it to, there's no one else that wants to put their name forward, we'll move to the council approval. Um, we need a majority vote, but, and we'll do this out in the public, usually we, we debate when there's more people, but it's only one, so we'll go ahead. Um, what was your name again, sir? I'm sorry.
Oh, uh, uh, Ba- Barry N. McCotner, yeah.
McCotner?
Uh, yeah, it's a big M, little c, big K, O-C-K-N-E-R.
McCotner, alright, I was in favor of seeing Mister McCotner in the, in this council, um, raise your hands.
Oh, super A, yeah.
Yeah, super C, cause I can't see him out of the desk yet.
Yep, 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 sorry, I meant.
It seems like it's unanimous. Sir, and it seems, uh, the council approves your nomination unanimously.
Barry, welcome.
Barry?
Oh, yeah, just got, got a hot boner, now, which, which, which seat do I take? Does any of them?
Whichever one you want, Barry. Uh, whichever one's open, I mean, technically it would've been, uh, yeah, whatever one's open.
It, it, this one's closest, I don't think it's, it's one here. Yeah, well, you know.
Well, welcome to the council, you are bound by the term that you are replacing, I believe Billy was up for the next cycle?
Uh, yeah, I hope, in March, March.
March, okay, so your, your election is up for March, your reelection.
Alright, wicked.
Alright, well, congratulations, welcome to the council.
I don't think about that.
Focal.
Alright, well. Do I gotta take an oath or something I get?
Well, we don't, I mean, we don't have an oath, I guess I, you know what, I'll, I'll get something together and I'll read you guys in the next week.
Oh, alright.
But we haven't really done that. But we can, if you want. Um, on that note, on that note, so, I don't know if you come to council meetings a lot, but, um, if you have some legislation next week, present to the council, if not, just talk about what you wanna work on.
Alright.
Well, congratulations. Uh, moving forward, I don't necessarily have any more, any more business to, to speak of for the council. Um, do the council members have any questions before we leave to the people and, and, and the, and the session?
Nah, we're good. No questions.
No questions. You're good, alright, any questions from the people? No, I'll be, I'll be darned. You adjourned.
Gavel, 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 let's go.
I know, that's, that's gotta be a record.
Oh, good shit.
Oh, let me look Gilbert out here, congratulations, buddy.
Yeah, oh, thank you, thank you.
Sure, we're gonna help you.
Yeah, yeah, uh.
And you, you keep your mouth shut about this.
I say nothing.
Don't make him wear a suit.
How are your nerves there, Tim?
Okay, good.
The nerves, I'm good, excuse me.